Hi, I'm Susan Kennedy. Welcome to our Town Hall meeting here at Francis Scott Key Middle School in Silver Spring. Standing right next to me is Council President Valerie Irvin, who is here to tell us about the format tonight, which is a little different from the usual town meetings that we hold. And I'm going to give her the microphone and let her explain.
First of all, it's very good to be here tonight at Key Middle School, which is a world IB school. And my first term on the council, this was my first Town Hall meeting, and this is a district that I represent, so I'm very happy to be here tonight. Tonight, we are going to have a very interesting discussion about the structural deficit that we have here in Montgomery County. And I want to thank and congratulate former Council President Nancy Florine for working so hard to bring us to this place, because she was the one who decided that we needed to have a long-term plan for balancing the budget, and that the Office of Legislative Oversight was the right office, I guess, in the county government to do just that. So I'm going to turn the rest of the program over for the first 15 minutes to the Director of the Office of Legislative Oversight Karen Orlansky.
Good evening. I'm Karen Orlansky, Director of the Montgomery County Council's Office of Legislative Oversight, and I'm joined here this evening by a number of my OLO colleagues, Craig Howard, Sarah Downey, and Leslie Rubin. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the Office, the one-sentence version is that we conduct research, evaluation, policy, and budget-related projects at the request of the county council. And in the past several years, we've been asked to do an increasing number of projects in the budget and fiscal area. Tonight, we're here to give you a 15-minute briefing on the report we recently completed on achieving a structurally balanced budget in Montgomery County. We undertook this project at the direction of the council in two parts. In Part One, we reviewed the spending and revenue trends of the past decade. In Part Two, we outlined options for achieving long-term fiscal balance. Before we delve into the report itself, I want to just take a few minutes up front to summarize the five points I recommend you take away as news from our presentation. First, the county faces a structural budget problem. This is because the projected growth in tax-supported revenue, at least for the foreseeable future, will not keep pace with the steadily rising costs of the county's spending commitments. And because the county must balance its budget, unless structural changes are made to the base of agency budgets, the county will likely find itself in the same position every year of identifying a gap that must be closed, and then scrambling for solutions, either on the revenue or spending side of the equation. Second, most of the county's tax dollars support the work of two agencies. The Montgomery County Public Schools and the county government together account for 91% of all tax-supported spending. Close to 2/3 of all agency employees work for the school system. Third, because government is a people-intensive business, it makes sense that the great majority of county funds is spent on human capital. The corollary to this, however, is that achieving substantial budget savings requires the county to reduce spending on personnel, and essentially, there are two ways to do that. You either reduce the size of your workforce, or you lower per-employee costs. Fourth, the county has assumed certain commitments that will continue to grow even if employee pay remains entirely frozen, and no services are added or expanded. These growing commitments include debt service, health insurance for active and retired employees, pension payments, and contributions to the county's fund reserves, all of which will continue to draw resources away from the possibility of new services to residents or compensation increases to employees. And last but not least, please keep in mind that the cost pressures and difficult trade-offs facing Montgomery County are by no means unique. While the story in each state and local government across the country is slightly different, there are basic plot similarities. In other words, we are not alone. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to brief you on the first part of our report.
I will present an overview of the first part of our study, which looked back at spending and revenue trends for fiscal years 2002 through 2011. This first slide shows that total tax-supported spending increased 59% over the past decade. The chart shows steady growth in the early part of the decade, with spending leveling off and then declining. For reference, please note that the inflation rate was 29% over the same time period, shown by the orange line, while the combined rate of growth for inflation and population was about 40% during the same time period, shown by the green line. The next two slides present macro views of how the county spends tax dollars. As you can see, two agencies account for 91% of government spending, MCPs at 57%, and the county government at 34%. This next slide divides spending between personnel costs and operating expenses. Note that personnel costs, that is, dollars spent for employee salaries and benefits, account for 82% of combined agency spending. This is not surprising, because most local government service delivery is done through government employees, such as public school teachers, police officers, and librarians. So if you want to hone in on what drives spending, you have to focus on the school system and county government, and you have to focus on personnel costs. On the topic of personnel costs, the next slide shows that these costs grew by 64% over the decade. While examining this data, we found something interesting, that is, that the size of the government workforce grew at a much slower rate than personnel costs. In fact, the number of government workers increased only by about 10% over the past decade, almost exclusively a result of new positions in MCPs and Montgomery College. What this tells us is that the primary driver behind the 64% growth in personnel costs was not a massive increase in workforce size, but rather, large increases in the cost per employee. Next, let's look at revenue trends. The green line tracks revenue growth since fiscal year 2002, and shows particularly rapid growth, about 7.4% annually, from fiscal years 2003 through 2009. This growth was fueled by the rapidly expanding economy, as well as tax rate increases and expansion of state aid. Now, let's look forward. The county projects that revenue for the next five years will continue to grow, but at a much slower rate, about 2.7% annually. So now, we see the first component of the budget challenge facing the county for the foreseeable future, namely, that future revenues will not be sufficient to accommodate spending growth at the pace experienced during the previous decade. Now, let's look more closely at the next five years. We will rescale the graph to focus on projected revenue through fiscal year 2016. The yellow line shows the amount of money expected to be available to the county in each of the next five years, assuming no change in tax rates. Now, let's introduce a line showing future expenditures. The expenditure line in the chart assumes no new or expanded programs, no budget adjustments for population or school enrollment growth, and no salary increases for government employees. Nonetheless, the chart shows expenditures exceeding revenue by $140 to $280 million in each of the next five years. So, why would there be a gap if revenues increase and government services and employee salaries remain constant? The answer lies within certain categories of spending that are projected to grow at a faster rate than revenue, even without changes in service levels or salaries. The first of these spending categories is employee benefits, most notably retirement plans and health insurance for both current and retired employees. Costs for these benefits have risen steeply over the past decade, and now consume about $585 million tax dollars. More importantly, these costs are projected to grow by about 50% to $875 million by fiscal year 2016. Please note that these costs do not include the potential transfer of teacher pensions from the state to the county. Another spending category that is growing at a faster rate than revenue is debt service. Debt service is the annual cost of repaying borrowing, used to finance the construction and renovation of schools, roads, and other public facilities. The yellow bars show the growth in debt service costs over the past decade. At our current rate of borrowing, these payments would increase by an additional 50% through fiscal year 2016, as shown in green. Finally, we have a series of policies intended to keep the county's fiscal house in order, and help the county retain its current AAA bond rating. Appended to your handout is a copy of the council resolution adopting these policies. To comply with these policies, the county will have to set aside more money than it had in previous years. All told, these commitments for employee benefits, debt service, and fiscal policies consume about 1/3 of all county resources. Which brings us back to the mismatch between projected revenues and expenditures, even when assuming no new programs or salary increases. Of course, the county cannot run a deficit. Instead, the county faces the challenge of bringing revenue and spending into long-term alignment, which can only be accomplished by raising more revenue or by bending cost curves downward.
To pick up where Sarah ended, Part Two of our report contains an array of potential budget savings and revenue-raising options to help address the county's structural budget challenge going forward. Before Craig briefs you on the contents of the issue papers, I will briefly review the factors that guided OLO's selection of options. For starters, we were guided by research into how other jurisdictions are addressing their own structural imbalances, because, as I said earlier, the cost pressures and difficult trade-offs facing Montgomery County are by no means unique. We were also guided by the advice of subject matter experts, and placed priority on exploring options that have the potential for reducing substantial and recurring savings. The options all adhere to legal guidance we received from the county attorney, and the report focuses on reforms that would reduce per-employee costs. We also went out of our way not to duplicate the work of other initiatives, such as the Organizational Reform Commission, which reported to the council yesterday. Recognizing that dollars spent on paying debt service are not available to fund agency operating costs, the report includes an issue paper that quantifies options for reducing the county's debt going forward. And finally, while the bulk of our report provides options that would reduce spending, we recognize that raising additional revenue is an alternative, and address potential options to do so. The report is organized into eight issue papers, which are listed on this slide. And now, here's Craig to delve a bit deeper into the contents of a few of these papers. And by the way, there are handouts, as you came in, that have copies of the slides, and afterwards, it has some supplemental material.
What I will do over the next few minutes is to show four examples of the many options in the report. One from each of the issue papers remaining on the screen. For each of the options we discuss, as well as the options we are not going to go through as part of this presentation, I want to emphasize that there is much more detail in the written report than we will describe today. The first option example is from the Employee Salaries Issue Paper, and is a salary rollback in fiscal year 12. A salary rollback is a permanent reduction to an employee's base salary. As shown by the table on this slide, this option could achieve savings of about $23 million for every 1% rollback, if applied to all agency employees. This next slide takes a look at one of the options related to health benefits for active employees, changing to a 70/30 cost share, which would reduce the portion of health insurance premiums paid by each agency by shifting more of the costs to employees. We're going to show two different models for implementing this option. And as you can see on the slide, there's a significant difference between the fiscal year 2012 savings associated with each model. First, though, this next slide summarizes the current cost-share arrangements for the majority of employees in each agency, as each agency determines the health plans it offers to employees, and the cost share associated with each. MCPs currently pays the largest portion of employee insurance premiums, 90% to 95%, while Montgomery College pays the smallest portion, 75%. If all agencies reduced their cost share to 70% of the premium, they would achieve substantial savings. The largest amount of savings would come from MCPs, both because of the size of its workforce, and because MCPs would experience the largest change in cost share. We will now show you a graph of how the cost curve for health benefits would change under this 70/30 option. This first red line shows the six-year projection for agency healthcare costs under the current cost-share arrangements. The yellow line shows the cost curve associated with a 70/30 cost share implemented on January 1st, 2012, which is halfway through the next fiscal year. Compared to the current cost share, the savings would be an estimated $35 million in fiscal year 12, and twice that, $73 million in fiscal year 13, the first full year of implementation. The second implementation model, illustrated by the green line, is to phase in the cost share change at a 5% change each year. This phase-in model would yield lower savings in the short term, about $10 million in fiscal year 12, but would reach the same level of savings by the end of fiscal year 16, when all the agencies would have reached the same cost share. Before we go through an example from the Retirement and Pension Benefits Issue Paper, I want to briefly explain the difference between defined benefit and defined contribution retirement plans. Defined benefit plans, often referred to as pension plans, pay a retiree a set monthly amount from retirement until death, based on a formula established by the employer. Defined contribution plans are like 401K plans, where an employee and an employer contribute a set percent of salary to a retirement account, and the employee is responsible for investing those funds. Now, why is this important to Montgomery County? Because most employees, approximately 88% across the four agencies in total, belong to the substantially more expensive defined benefit plans. One retirement option from the report is to enroll all new county government employees in a defined contribution plan. This option would actually extend the action the county council took in 1994, when it closed the defined benefit plan to certain groups of employees. While this particular example is specific to county government only, the report includes a similar option for MCPs, and this type of structural change could be applied to the other agencies as well. This next slide shows how much the county government has contributed annually to fund the defined benefit plan, the area in green on the bottom, compared to the defined contribution plan, the area in yellow. In fiscal year 2011, while the defined benefit plan has roughly the same number of members as the defined contribution plan, the county government will spend 7 and 1/2 times as much to fund the defined benefit plan. While an actuarial analysis is required to determine the specific amount of savings under this option, we can tell you that if all current county government employees were in a defined contribution plan today, the county's FY 2011 retirement costs would have been approximately $77 million less. The last option I want to spend a couple minutes on is workforce size reduction, that is, reducing the number of people on the county payroll. Reducing workforce size is an option to reduce personnel costs, although we again remind you that the primary personnel cost driver over the past decade has been higher costs per employee, as opposed to a large growth in the workforce. And of course, a decision to reduce the workforce would necessitate corresponding reductions in service delivery. To provide some perspective on this, this next slide shows the average salary and benefits cost per work year, and the resulting number of work years that would need to be reduced for every $10 million in savings in each agency. The data indicate that between 89 and 153 positions would need to be abolished for each increment of $10 million in savings. To take this one step further, this last slide provides some illustrative examples of what $10 million in work years represents in each agency, based on the average cost data you just saw. We want to be clear that the examples listed on this slide are not offered as recommendations for reduction, but rather to illustrate in a tangible way what an increment of $10 million in work years can buy in each agency. For example, in county government, $10 million represents 100% of the career firefighters assigned to the Silver Spring #1, Kensington #18, and Gaithersburg #28 fire stations combined. In MCPs, $10 million represents 85% of all elementary school music teachers. In Montgomery College, $10 million represents 25% of all instructional faculty across all three of the college's campuses. And in Park &amp; Planning, $10 million represents the entire Park Police Division. Before turning it back over to Karen to conclude, I wanted to let you know that your handout includes tables that summarize the potential savings and/or revenue associated with each of the options in the report, a table with additional illustrative examples of what $10 million in work years represents in each agency, and the web address where you can access the entire report online.
I'm going to close out our briefing by emphasizing an inescapable truth, and it is this: There are no magic solutions where everyone wins. Solving a structural budget imbalance inevitably means making very, very difficult decisions that involve requiring some to pay more, and others to make do with less. And that concludes our brief overview of the two-part report. On behalf of the OLO staff, I want to again thank you for allowing us to join your meeting this evening. And now, I turn it back to Susan. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Karen. Great report, great information from the Office of Legislative Oversight. We're going to take a quick break, but when we come back, we're going to come back to the audience with questions about this information they just received. Stay with us. Stay with us. Welcome back to our town hall meeting at Francis Scott Key Middle School in Silver Spring. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Council President Valerie Irvin now for some introductions of her colleagues.
Thank you very much. Good evening again, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight at Key Middle School. And I'm going to introduce my colleagues that I serve with on the county council, starting with to my far left. We'll start with Hans.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hans Reimer, one of the four at-large members on the council. I live in Silver Spring. I guess I would just say that I think our way of life, we're in a difficult point right now, and we have a great challenge to figure out how we can sustain our schools, our parks, our libraries, public transportation. And I am totally committed to making sure that this is the same great place to live for families in every generation that it was, you know, the last 20 years. It'll be the same the next 20 years. So we will get through this, but we have to make some difficult decisions, and I'm glad for you to get your input here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phil Andrews. I represent District Three on the county council, which is the Rockville, Gaithersburg, North Potomac, Derwood, Washington Grove area. I chair the council's Public Safety Committee and serve on the Education Committee, and I look forward to hearing your questions.
Hi, I'm Mark Elrich. I'm a second-term at-large council member. I'm here to listen. We all got through a long election season, and I think got lots of input and reflections from the citizens, and I hope that you all found the presentation useful to start this, and I look forward to the discussion.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Navarro. I represent District Four, which is about two blocks north from here on New Hampshire Avenue. I am a member of the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, actually the Chair of that committee, and a member of the Health and Human Services Committee. It's really a pleasure to be here in this beautiful building. I also served in the Board of Education for five years, and I think and I hope that we would have a wonderful dialogue tonight. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Craig Rice, representing District Two, which is the northwestern part of Montgomery County, going all the way from Poolsville through Germantown, Clarksburg, and also includes parts of Alney, as well as our well-known agricultural reserve. Brand-new member of the council, looking forward to this first town hall meeting this evening and hearing all of the questions that you have this evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Nancy Florine, just starting my third term as an at-large member of the Montgomery County Council. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and I hope to hear from you on these really challenging issues that are really going to create the basis for this, a lot of this council's work this year. I chair the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee and serve on the Transportation and Environment Committee. I'm very interested in hearing your thoughts and your suggestions for how we handle the budget challenges that we're facing. Thank you.
And I'm Councilmember George Leventhal, an at-large member of the council at the beginning of my third term. I want to thank you for sending me back to represent you on the county council. I'm Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee. I also serve on the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee. I'm pleased to be here tonight with our two new council members, Craig Rice and Hans Reimer. It is their first event like this, so please be gentle.
And again, I'm Valerie Irvin. I actually represent this district on the council. I'm beginning my second term on the council. I chair the Education Committee, and I serve on the committee we just changed the name of. It's called the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee. And I'm really excited to be here again, like I said, and it was a great presentation for a lot of reasons, and we really look forward to delving into the substance of that presentation that we just received from OLO, because this council is going to spend the next four months with our sleeves rolled up, working very hard to balance this budget under some very, very difficult circumstances.
Okay, as Council President Irvin just said, our first part of the show tonight is going to be questions about the report that we just received here. So I have my first person here who has a question.
My name is Casey Sittins, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Sligo Middle School. I live by the golf course, right off of Sligo Creek Parkway. I have two points. One about salaries. If you look at the salary schedule, I make $47,125. With extracurriculars, I'm making $49,000 and $274. All said and done, it's like $31,000, and I feel like teachers are demonized for the pay that we get. I work 50 to 70 hours a week. I would have worked during last week's snowstorm, during the snow days. It's hard to do that when it's 45 degrees out in your house with the power gone. That's a joke. The other thing, it's kind of in the same line, is one of the things that they're planning on cutting is outdoor education. And some of us here probably have gone to outdoor education in their sixth-grade year in this area. I'm from Pennsylvania. I didn't even get to go. It's $596,776. That's what they say they're going to save. I know that we waste a lot of money in the county, in Montgomery County Public Schools. Anecdotally, I just want you to think about this for a second. One fully funded and functional outdoor education program equals one superintendent of school, one chief operating officer, and one deputy superintendent of schools, or four out of the 40 directors in central office, or four of the six community superintendents, or four of the four associate superintendents. Okay? It's, I guess my main point, and I know I ramble, and I'm sorry, it's a little nerve-wracking, but when can we cut the bureaucracy and cut the fat and really focus on the kids? I love my job. I love what I do. I want, I just, I feel like there's not enough people, even in Montgomery County Public Schools, who are focusing on what is important, and that's the future of our children, and that's not happening. And that's, I don't know, I guess there's not maybe, there's a lot there, I'm sorry, so.
First of all, thank you very much for your comments, and none of us on this panel demonize teachers. As a matter of fact, I served on the school board for a couple of years before I ran for the council, and I now chair the council's Education Committee, and we care very, very deeply about children in our public schools, and we care very, very deeply about the teachers who teach them. And you all deserve, as you already did, a tremendous round of applause from this audience, but across this county, because Montgomery County had a lot to do with the state becoming the, for the third year in a row, the top school system in the nation. And we want to thank you and congratulate you for all of your hard work. But let me pick up from there, and I'm going to share the mic here in a second, but I just want you to know, there's no demonizing going on. And as a matter of fact, this council has not received the school system's budget yet. We don't know what's in it. We don't know if outdoor education is up for a cut. And even if we did, it's the school board, let's just be very clear here, the council does not make those decisions. Your elected Board of Education determines what gets cut in the school system's budget. We receive the budget, and we look at it, and the folks who are with me on the Education Committee, that would be Councilmember Craig Rice and Councilmember Phil Andrews, take great care in that budget when we receive it. But you need to have this same conversation with your elected Board of Education, who will be determining how and when and where those cuts get made. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Councilmember Elrich.
I really want to thank you for what you said and how you said it. I'm a former school teacher. Until I got elected, I taught at Rolling Terrace Elementary School, fifth grade, just down the road from you. And I know what the job is like, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of something that I've been saying since I got elected and the things I said when I was a school teacher, was there is waste in the school system, like there is waste everyplace else. And the insistence of the superintendent that this is the only perfectly-run $2.1 billion corporation on the face of the earth just does not stand up to any kind of reasonable test. And I think it's critical that we actually look at eliminating waste and we look at eliminating bureaucracy before we eliminate the jobs of people who actually perform services. But I also want to say that that extends, not just to teachers, but it extends to all of the county employees, that this council is not engaged in demonizing, but clearly in the larger political discussion, workers are being demonized and being held accountable for the problems of state governments and local governments meeting budgets that was caused by the collapse of a financial system that was engineered by people on Wall Street. And somehow, working people and middle-class families have been forced to bear the brunt of something that none of us had anything to do with. And now, working people, I think, have often been made into the bad guys in this. The truth is that the collapse has limited our resources. We are going to make unpleasant cuts, but I think it's incumbent on us at the county level and at the school level, before we look at cutting services, to look at cutting the bureaucracy and making sure we don't touch a job that's productive until we've eliminated those jobs that aren't productive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you very much for choosing to be a teacher. It's extraordinarily rewarding job, but I know that at times, as you have expressed, you feel like everybody's pointing fingers at you. So thank you very much. I do have two daughters, one that graduated from MCPS and one who is an eighth grader, and I totally understand what you go through every single day, so thank you. I will only add a couple of points to what has already been said. I think that when we had wonderful years, obviously, the school system, our education is something that we feel really proud of in Montgomery County, which is why we made decisions to invest in so many different levels. And what you will hear from central office is that central office plays a role in supporting you in the classroom. And this is what I remember in my days on the board, every time we attempted to address issues in central office, this was the response. And to a certain degree, you have to realize, I mean, it's a very large school system, 16th largest in the nation, 140,000 students. So to a certain extent, I understand why decisions had to be made the way they've made. Now, we're in a totally new normal. It's a complete new day, and so I will echo that it's really critical to make sure everybody here, parents, teachers, et cetera, to make sure that you are communicating with the Board of Education, who has the ultimate authority to decide where you're going to cut. And I will agree with you, I think that because we've invested for so long and we have built such capacity in our school system, there are places which will hurt, but will not necessarily hurt the children that you care so much about. So we will do what we can to continue to echo that message throughout, but I want you to know that all of us here, I think, have been extraordinarily dedicated to our school system.
Like my colleagues, I want to thank you for what you've been doing in terms of serving our kids. I apologize for the temperature issues you've been facing. We're all frustrated with Pepco also. I just wanted to make the point that this is not, the budget experience that we're going to be going into here is not an us versus them, you versus county employees experience. I hope we can keep it on the level that the Office of Legislative Oversight report has reflected. We have a big problem. We knew that when we approved the budget last year. This council set in place some financial policies that we thought would get us back on the straight and narrow, but we also projected a big problem. Everyone knew, including the Board of Education, last June, that there was going to be a problem coming through this year's budget. So the point of this, the OLO report is to lay out the real issues out there, so that when this council has to get into the nitty-gritty of making difficult decisions, we hope the community understands what the context is. And the context is that we don't want to have this annual scrambling, furloughing of employees, threats of lawsuits, or anything like that, as we work through a plan for this county's fiscal stability. And it's going to be hard, and there are going to be people who are going to be affected. We all are. Everyone up here who was in the council last year took a pay cut, and everyone who, except for MCPS employees, basically took a pay cut. We hope that we will work through this year in a more even keel, so we have a fair distribution of the burdens of working through this budget, as well as the benefits. So bear with us, and please continue to stay involved. Thank you.
One of the goals of the council over the years, when it has dealt with difficult budgets, and this is the most difficult year we have seen, is to avoid layoffs of employees. And I think that is an important goal to continue to have at the forefront, because I think that's the worst alternative in many respects, not just only for the individual involved, but it has a very severe impact on families and communities. And so in order to avoid significant numbers of layoffs, and I hope we don't have any, we may have some, and I think the only way to avoid a significant number is to have reductions in salary and benefit costs that are shared across all of the agencies. And that, if we do that in a way that is sufficient, will help us avoid similar difficult years in the future. And I think this is the year we've got to address the structural aspects of this challenge.
My name's Jim Mills. I live in Rockville. All I know is that the end of every pay period, I have a check, and I know what that number is. And I live on a very fixed budget. And when you start talking about taking a 70-30 on the health plan, we haven't seen a pay increase in Montgomery County Public Schools, I haven't, in three years, going on four. But yet, more deductions come out, no pay increases, and my real property tax has gone through the ceiling. I literally have to refinance my house to pay my real property tax. Now, I want to know why, for so many years, we have been living outside of our means. And as far as revenue, your speed cameras is a runaway revenue train, and there's eight engineers. I mean, it was originally put in place for school safety and kids, and it passed the vote by you guys by one, and now they just have covered the county. That's an immense amount of revenue. And in saying another thing for the school board, the equipment at the schools, I'm a mechanic, I know, has far out seen its life cycle and is in disarray. So, yes, there's a big problem.
I want to also thank you for your service to our school system. You said that there had been runaway spending all those years, and I want to thank all of the public employees who have served the county so well. As the OLO laid out overwhelmingly, the increases in spending over the last several years, and I've been on the council for eight years now, went to compensation and benefits. And I was very happy to support fair and even generous increases in compensation when the county could afford it. But when we have county employees who question, where did the money go, we were very proud to provide fair and even generous compensation to county employees. That's where the money went. As for speed cameras, speed cameras are making the roads safer. We've had very clear data from the police department that accidents are down, collisions are down, fatal incidents are down. We've had, actually, the use of speed cameras.
Hold, just a second, sir. Let me get your follow-up on the microphone, please.
... with three major insurance companies, 21st Century, AIG, which is a subsidiary, and Allstate. And rear-end collisions in Montgomery County are at an all-time high.
The, our, the data our police have assembled do not back that up, sir. So we're seeing that accidents are down and the streets are safer as a result of the speed cameras. The General Assembly has passed legislation that actually limits their use, and so we're not using them as extensively as we were in the past, but they generate the revenue that they generate, and the revenue they generate goes directly to public safety and particularly traffic safety projects.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Kathy Powell. I am a math teacher in middle school, Bannaker Middle School. I teach statistics to my students, and I teach them that they can inform or they can inflame. And as he said, if you look through this, for someone looking at it who is not familiar with statistics, the school system does take quite a hit, looking at the size of the circle graph, et cetera. So be aware of that as you look through this and the perception that's coming through this. I left the private sector in 1985 to come to work for the school system. I am now making what I was making in 1985 in the private sector. You take away 1%, 2%, 3% of my salary, you add 30% to my benefits, I'm taking a cut of $3,000 to $5,000. That's quite a bit. I'm a single parent. I have to tell you that my brother pays $11,000 in school taxes for a house that's valued at half of mine, approximately the same size. When you take a look at this, I would like you to think about maybe, and I know some people are going to get upset with this, but as opposed to cutting as much as you think you'd like to, possibly raising the taxes a bit. I would rather have that and then have that reduced later on, when things get better, which, over the years, they should, and as they already are. So I would like you to take that into account. I say this not only from the school system, but also for all of the other county employees that are paying the same kinds of rates. Let's see, was one other? I think that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving around the other side here, trying to, I'm seeing a lot of hands go up, which is great, so I'm going to get to as many people as I can. Okay, sir, did you have a question? Could stand up, please. Thank you.
I'm Mike Schultz, and I live here in Hillendale. You talked to the expenditure side of the budget, but you didn't talk to the revenue side. What would be needed, keeping the expenditures at the rate in which they've been going, to balance the budget on the revenue side, on the income side?
Good question. Do you want to answer that?
Can I just generalize? I don't know what the increase in property tax rates would be to make the numbers work. Maybe our staff has that information, but what we know is it would be pretty significant. And we've heard from two people already about, and we know, lots of people pay significant property tax bills. We have already gone to the limit on income tax within, compared to Virginia, which does not have an income tax, of course. It puts us in a disadvantage, and actually, it's a burden on everyone who lives in this county. But we've gone to the limit on income taxes. We put into place a big hike on taxes on energy usage, which is very, frankly, unfair to residents. We had very little choice last year as to where to go. And what we also know is property tax assessments are going down. Many people, though, have benefited from a cap, a limitation on property tax assessments, though, tax rates, and you may actually be experiencing an increase in your property tax, even while your property tax assessment is going down. And that's because of some of the laws we put into place to protect homeowners. So the challenge is, frankly, for all of us, how far can we go to generate the kind of revenue that we would need to sustain the numbers that are before us? And none of us, well, very few of us, have the stomach to think about what that means for the average person. Our challenge is, how do we retain jobs, as Councilmember Andrews said, and find the right balance between the costs that we are imposing on all of our residents? And it's a very significant cost, of which we are very sensitive. Remember, this is the county that voted against an ambulance fee this fall. What we heard loud and clear is that people do not want to bear additional costs, and that is our challenge.
I would add, as Councilmember Florine noted, the county is already at the legal maximum on the local income tax. The real estate, the recordation transfer tax is already fairly significant. The energy tax is very high. The property tax is the main producer of revenue for the county, produces about $1.6 billion or so of revenue, about 38%, 40% of the total. Given a $300 million gap, you'd have to raise the property tax by about 20% to close that gap through revenue increases.
I think you ask a, I mean, it's a really good question, and it's a challenge for us. I don't take as hard a line against taxes, but I think the reality is, people fundamentally don't believe the government is running as efficiently as it can. Unless you've got people's confidence that you've done everything you can do to make this place run as efficiently as you can make it run, it's very difficult to say, give me more money. And the reaction I get from people is that if you solve the problem with taxes, then you don't have to deal with any of your inefficiencies. You just go out and you raise money. And I think it's incumbent on us to really take a hard look at how we do business. But I think the challenge is trying to be humane about what we do. I don't think county employees are paid too much. It may not be possible to give the increases we gave in the past, but saying you can't afford the same rate of increase is way different than saying that people are overpaid. And I just don't believe that we've got overpaid county employees that go out and do the work that all of you see every day. And we can talk about the high taxes we have, but we also have a quality of life which is pretty good. There's a reason why we have some of the highest property values around. There's a reason why people say we want to come and live in Montgomery County. It didn't get that way for free. It got that way because people paid taxes, and they said, we want this kind of schools, these kind of parks, these recreation services, we want libraries, you know, that we value the things we pay our taxes for. But I find, like, in this moment, that we're in a difficult place, trying to get people's trust to let us do what we may have to do at a time when people are leery about how well government is actually functioning. And that's a hard place to be.
I would add that, over the short term, you know, we're in a very tough spot. We have to either cut spending or raise revenue, and legally, we just don't have that many options on the revenue, so it's going to fall to the spending side. Over the long term, though, we can change the equation. You know, we're trying to divide up the pie right now, because that's the only pie we have, but we can make the pie bigger over the next three, five, 10, 20 years, if we can focus more effectively on creating jobs here in the county and building a stronger revenue base. And I think any, you know, smart approach to this challenge right now would say, let's deal with the immediate crisis, and let's invest in the future, so that five, 10 years from now, you know, we're not repeating this. But, you know, the situation that we're in right now this year, we can have this every year. We can keep doing this as long as we want to. Or we can approach it a little differently and try to change the equation, so that 10 years from now, we're in a better place.
Bob Stewart with the County Employees Union. The primary vehicle for providing retirement security for Americans across this country coming out of World War II was the defined benefit pension system. And that worked well for creating an American middle class that, through the '50s, '60s, and into the '70s, that did this country proud. And, but, over the last 30 years, through combined attacks, starting around 1980, when a certain president was elected, 30 years of driving down costs in the private sector has led to all but the elimination of the defined benefit retirement system in this country. So I find it hard to believe, and sort of incredulous, that in a county like Montgomery, the political structure would just fall in line with an OLO report that encourages the elimination of the defined benefit retirement system in Montgomery County for public employees, like has occurred in the private sector throughout the country over the last 30 years. like has occurred in the private sector throughout the country over the last 30 years. My question is this. Do any of you up there, can any of you up on the desk provide a vision and articulate that vision for any substantial ways, alternative ways to the OLO report that you see where substantial savings can be achieved that speaks to sustainability, which is a factor? Can you articulate any alternative vision for accomplishing that other than just falling in line with Mr. Farber and the OLO report?
First of all, Bob, let me just say that the Office of Legislative Oversight was directed by this council to do the research they did and they came up with a series of, not even recommendations, but like a menu of options for council members who are ultimately the decision makers to decide, "OLO, staff the council." They do not make the decisions that elected officials make. So I just want to be clear that that is not, was not their job, nor is it their task. They did that because we directed them to do so. In terms of the savings, we are in a $300 million deficit today, which could always be written down more as it was last year. If you'll recall, I think it was written down three times before we got to May. We are living in some very, very interesting times. And I liked your historical context that you laid out for over the past 40 years in terms of where defined pension benefits came from and how they fueled the middle class of America. My parents were two who retired with a great pension. But as you've heard from OLO today, Montgomery County is not unique in the country. This is a phenomenon that is being experienced across the nation. And we are just one jurisdiction that has to come to terms with the fact that we can no longer afford to spend taxpayer dollars the way that we had in the past when we could afford it. We simply can no longer afford it. So I will turn the microphone over to Councilmember Leventhal.
Well, I just want to say, we have the benefit of OLO's work to describe the scope of the problem. We also yesterday received an excellent report from the Organizational Reform Commission. And there are other good ideas on the table for eliminating redundancy, streamlining agencies, finding more efficient ways of doing business. The Organizational Reform Commission, I think maybe the most exciting recommendation it made was a complete change in the way that information technology is handled, to go to cloud computing, which would save an enormous amount of money, tens of millions of dollars over time, which the federal government has already adopted. So there is a lot of innovative thinking that's coming out. Mr. Elrich and I have been advocating that we should have a single setup for employee health benefits across all agencies. The agencies are fighting that. So there is redundancy, there's no question. We don't need a separate procurement officer for all five agencies, not Park and Planning, Montgomery College, school system, WSSC, county government, all need to have their own benefits administrator, their own procurement officer. There are ways to achieve savings and I think the benefit of this budget crisis is that we are asking some hard questions about why are things this way? Why do we have to have county government structured this way just because that's the way it's structured? Can we rethink and remake and reshape county government? And that conversation is going on. But even all of the savings of the Organizational Reform Commission, if they were implemented, would not address the size of the structural deficit. And so sadly, unfortunately, all county employees, including council members, are going to have to make sacrifices on compensation and benefits as well.
You know, Bob, it's very interesting. You bring up a very good point in terms of looking at history. So I'll take a step back and look at where corporate America, where my background is, where I used to be, and why they made the decisions they did. And from my understanding, with being one of the largest hospitality companies in the world, they made that decision based on sustainability. And they wanted to make sure that they were still being able to provide to their employees what they needed to, to make sure that they would be sustainable and have the ability to innovate and do all the things that people expected them to do and deliver on that promise. And I think that as a state now, you're seeing that the governor and his new proposal in changing the defined benefit plan while not absolving it totally, that is still something that's on the table. It might not be proposed by the governor, but that's something that our state is looking at and many other states throughout the nation are looking at this. And I think that it's important that, you know, being the son of a teacher who taught at Model Secondary School for the Deaf in Gallaudet University, which is only one of two federal universities in the nation, so she's a government, federal government employee, has a great pension, and they've started to increase the liabilities associated with her government pension. She just called me last night and asked me, "Craig, I don't understand why the money's going up and why they're taking more money out of my pension check." I understand. I understand it's an uncomfortable situation to be in, there's no question. But the reality is, is that the promises we delivered and the decisions we made, we as governments back in the day, we went down the wrong path. And I think that we thought that this was going to work and this is a time for us to right the ship. And I know that it's uncomfortable. It's very difficult to tell people that, hey, the direction we've gone in is not the right one. But I think that we're trying to make a decision that makes sure that we can still deliver on what's important for Montgomery County residents and also our employees and make sure that we can get ourselves on the right track for something that's going to last not just for three to five years, but something that's going to last for 20 so that my children, your children, grandchildren can continue to see the positive things that come out of Montgomery County.
I guess I have a slightly different view. I don't think we went down the wrong track trying to provide people with decent retirement. I shudder to think what would have happened to somebody who was on a defined contribution, were on a contribution plan and retired the year the stock market collapsed and then watched their entire savings for retirement vanish? And then try to figure out how those people are going to make their mortgages, pay their rents, pay their medical bills and everything else. I think there's something to be said for trying to envision some kind of humane future for everybody in this community and make sure that everybody, people get to stay here, that they get to keep their homes and live decent lives so that 75-year-olds aren't forced to mop floors at McDonald's because they don't have retirement savings. I mean, at some point, we've got to ask ourselves, what kind of community do we want to live in? Now, I don't, no, I don't think Marriott's any different than any other corporation. What's happened over the last 40 years is basically almost no rise in wages despite inflation. At the same time, enormous growth in corporate profits, enormous growth in the banking sector. You've already seen that the financial institutions that wrecked the country are now paying record bonuses to people since they've recovered in two years. None of us got our money back. None of, you know, we're sitting here suffering from the kind of, you know, financial collapse that happened. The people who benefited from a financial collapse are still benefiting. And we're forced to turn on each other and talk about, what am I going to do to the worker and what am I going to do to the taxpayer instead of, is there a more fundamental way to look at things? Valerie's right. I mean, we've got recommendations from OLO. Through their recommendations, they're not cast in stone. And, you know, for my part, I will look for the most humane way to deal with the mess that we've inherited.
Well, I just actually, I would associate myself with Mark's remarks. You know, you've seen some relevant charts, some important statistics. At the end of the day, you have nine people up here and, you know, you know our records individually. I can assure you that I'm going to look for solutions that I believe are consistent with my progressive values. I'm not going to compromise on that. At the end of the day, you know, we'll have to balance a budget. But I'd like to make a point about that. We don't know the size of the deficit that we are trying to close, this year, next year, or over the next six years. We know that we have a deficit, but the size of the gap will depend upon the outcome of, you know, a whole lot of other factors. Collective bargaining, proposals that we'll receive, tax estimations. So you shouldn't assume that because you see a whole lot of proposals, we're going to enact them all. You know, I think that an average person could see the information and misinterpret. This is a wealth of information outlining a huge range of ideas. We do not know yet what problem we're trying to solve and what solutions are best. So this is all taken under advisement and we will be solving our fiscal crisis in this county. That is non-negotiable. But we will do it in a way, and I will advocate for solutions that are consistent with the progressive values of our community.
Well, actually, this is a real problem. It's not academic and those numbers are not that far off the mark. They're not precise, there's no question about that. But that's why we started this exercise last year. This is a serious problem. Last week, the state of New York took over Nassau County because of their fiscal situation. We actually are kind of comparable to them in terms of size and expenditures. New York City is looking at laying off 15,000 to 20,000 teachers. That is the kind of thing. Those are the kinds of situations that we want to avoid by putting ourselves on a strong financial path. So these options, while they're troubling and they're, they're not academic, they are real things that we're going to need to be considering. I don't know where we're going to end up, but when you think about, as you saw on the slide, laying off, to just get to $100 million in savings in this county involves laying off people losing their jobs, 100 people about. That's a lot of jobs. We would like to preserve, I think this council would like to do the best it can to preserve jobs within the school system and jobs within county government because those are the people who are in the trenches delivering services to you. And at the same time, we don't want to bankrupt our residents with respect to their tax burden, which we all, we all know is very high. So I think it's important to realize that this conversation is not just because we could have a conversation. It's to bring to our community the kinds of information that this council is going to wrestle with over the next coming months.
Be right back with more of our town meeting from Francis Scott Key Middle School in Silver Spring. Stay with us. [applause] Hi, we're back with more of our town hall meeting from Key Middle School in Silver Spring. We're going right back to the floor with questions.
Hi, my name is Sherri Davis. I live in Silver Spring. I've lived in Montgomery County all of my life. I'm a Montgomery County employee. I'm a social worker. I work with vulnerable adults, people that a lot of people wouldn't want to work with. I'm in the trenches. I relate to what teachers are saying, that we are the frontline workers, single parent, Silver Spring, can't imagine a pay cut. I want to say that I understand the situation we're in, I do. But I don't think that, as was said by Mr. Leventhal, the county government didn't create the crisis. It was a financial crisis. We had very little to do with it. And now I feel that it's being solved on, or the deficit's being made up on the backs of a very small group of people, county employees. And I have a problem with that. And I agree with, and I live in the county. So I'm going to say what was said that was not popular is I'd rather see, and I understand there's issues with taxes, but I would rather see something spread along among all county employees, I mean, I'm sorry, county residents, and I would be one of those, rather than a small group of people taking the hit, which is what I feel like is happening. One comment about ambulance fees, that didn't get passed because of bad PR. The county did a terrible job getting out the message. They were too little, too late. Volunteers got out early. I voted for the fee, but I'm just telling you, that's why it didn't pass. So don't like say people don't want to raise taxes. What that was about was really bad PR. People I knew, elderly, felt that they were going to get charged and all this nonsense, and that's why it didn't pass. That's what I have to say about that. One thing I am in favor of is some equity among salary and benefits across all county employees. And while I respect and appreciate what teachers do, and I was a cluster rep for many years for Blake Cluster, I do feel that it's pitting employee against employee by having such disparity in the county benefit structure. I would like to know if anyone ever came up with what the savings would be if just the benefits were equitable? You know, there's a graph here that talks about what each person has to contribute for their benefits. And I'm wondering if it was all the same, if what kind of savings that would be and if anyone ever thought about that? So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
I think that that should be addressed by the Office of Legislative Oversight. I know you have a, I know you did this in your report. If you could respond, we would appreciate it.
The answer to that question depends on which benefit stream you're talking about and the different assumptions you make. For example, the option that we showed you about the employee health benefits, that would be essentially making the cost share equal across the employees of all agencies. So the numbers that we stated earlier, 35 million in FY '12 and 73 million FY '13, that would be all agencies, or all employees of all agencies having the same cost share. So that would be an example of the type of information that I think you're speaking to.
I just want to make sure my question's clear. On page nine, where it talked about 2011 premium cost share, it talks about the amount that the agency pays, the amount that the employee pays. So let's say we go with what the least amount for an agency is, which is 75% Montgomery College. So let's say every agency paid 75% and the employee paid the 25%. I'm wondering if you figured out just that, what difference it would make for the county?
Yes, it would be a little, it would be less than 35 million, but it would be that, if it was done with 70% and 30%, so 70% the agency and 30% the employee, if for all the employees, it would be $35 million in this next fiscal year, fiscal year '12. So if you change that to 75-25, it'd be less, a little bit less than that amount.
Okay, I would like to comment, is my mic on?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, I'd like to comment to the question that was just posed because I think what's happening tonight is that there's a lot of insider baseball conversation going on. And if you're not an employee, a government employee, or if you don't work for the school system, there are other members of our audience who are from the community who do neither. And so I think it would be fair for the rest of the people here to sort of put this in a little bit of context. And I think that your comments were very well taken and you talked about equities. Well, it's going to be really hard for the council to be able to determine how we're going to force any kind of across-the-board 70-30 split across all county agencies because guess what? We don't control the school system's budget in terms of how they determine their salary and benefit structure. We are trying to do some things at the state right now to create some equities where they don't exist right now. But the nine of us here control the government side of that budget. We don't have any problem with that. But when you start looking at the MCPS, 57% of the operating budget, we have a little bit of a hill to climb before we're able to make any kind of significant changes to that budget. So I just wanted to put that in a little bit of context because it sounds to me like there's a lot of conversation going on here that only the people who are working And so, I think it would be fair for the rest of the people here to sort of put this in a little bit of context. And I think that your comments were very well taken, and you talked about equities. Well, it's going to be really hard for the council to be able to determine how we're going to force any kind of across-the-board 70-30 split across all county agencies, because guess what? We don't control the school system's budget in terms of how they determine their salary and benefit structure. We are trying to do some things at the state right now to create some equities where they don't exist right now. But the nine of us here control the government side of that budget. We don't have any problem with that. But when you start looking at the MCPS, 57% of the operating budget, we have a little bit of a hill to climb before we're able to make any kind of significant changes to that budget. So, I just wanted to put that in a little bit of context, because it sounds to me like there's a lot of conversation going on here that only the people who are working for the government or for MCPS understand. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Councilmember Leventhal.
I just want to say that in the current fiscal year's budget, I advocated, and we were successful, in making sure that those furloughs that were imposed were not imposed at the same rate for everyone regardless of income. Three days pay cut, five days pay cut, eight days pay cut, it makes a big difference whether you're making $40,000 a year or $140,000 a year. And whatever approach we take, whether it is furloughs, whether it is reductions in salary, I want to make sure that we apply that same approach to fairness. As for social workers, I'm chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee. I'm very well aware that we have intake workers in the Health and Human Services Department who are not earning very much more than the clients who are eligible for public assistance. And that happens frequently. So, I'm very much aware of what people earn at different levels of the pay scale, and I do think we need to be fair, that those who are at the higher end of the income scale need to take, need to make larger sacrifices than those who are at the very bottom end. And that was what I advocated for in this year's budget with the structuring of furloughs successfully.
One other comment, and that is that the current challenge the county faces isn't just related to the economy. Now, the housing bubble, the drive-up in housing prices is driven by a lot of irresponsible lending that artificially inflated home values for a long time and which drove up property tax revenues, is something that was not going to continue. But if compensation and other spending was based on that, as it was, it wasn't going to be able to continue under any circumstance, just a matter of time. And so, even if the economy, under normal circumstances, had kept going, we'd still have very difficult decisions to make. The challenge for the next couple of years is how best to spend less.
Also, just wanted to reiterate something that was alluded to, I think, before the break. This particular report was something that we asked for, because we wanted to have a clear overview of what were some of the cost drivers and what could be some of the options. And I think, especially for those who may be watching this particular forum later on, it's really important to clarify that these are options. There are also analyses in terms of where we are and where we will be if we don't address certain issues. But we have not put forth any specific, you know, recommendations or adopted any specific options yet. There's still a process, you know, we still have to wait for the Board of Education to adopt its budget, and then it'll go to the executive, and then we will receive that on March 15th. And then we will begin sort of this really not-so-comfortable process of trying to figure out how do we achieve a balanced budget. So, in reality, this is a time for you to express your views, and I think it's really important. I mean, for those of you who feel that, yes, you know, I don't mind more taxes, et cetera, we need to hear that. For those of you, like, social worker and teachers who are really worried about the impact of a pay cut, you know, I think that it's important for you to understand what Mr. Leventhal said. We have taken a progressive approach to some of those types of issues. So, we are very mindful. You know, this is not about making, you know, folks who are in the lower pay scale suffer. We're very mindful of what that might mean. So, I just wanted to say for the general public that we are in a listening mode. Very quickly, we'll have to begin acting, but I really do appreciate OLO as well as the organizational reform commission's options. Nobody wants to sit here and have to hear that type of information, but I think that's why we were elected to do, and it's about the future of this county. So, just wanted to make that clarification as well for the listening audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Larry Kindeli. I've been a resident of Montgomery County for about 25 years. I have two children, one son who is completely educated through the public school system in Montgomery County through high school. My daughter's a junior in high school who hadn't completely educated again in the county public school system. Very, very happy with it. I'm very pleased with it. Believe that quality of teaching is outstanding. Schools are outstanding. I'm an educational researcher. I've been all over the country looking at school systems, and Montgomery County is really stellar, I believe. And one of the reasons I moved to Montgomery County was for my children's education, because I believe in public education. So, I have actually two questions. I recognize, of course, like everybody else, I know what's going on with budgets and state government and the need to do something about it. But however, when you do look at budgets, I think the prudent thing is to look first at where there might be overspending. So, my question is, does the council believe that we are spending too much money on education in Montgomery County? And are we paying teachers too much? And if not, whether or not we are, and especially if we are, then wouldn't cutting those things then reduce the quality of education in our county, especially relative to other school districts in the area? And I don't think New York City is a comparison. I think that comparison should be other counties in Maryland and in Virginia and the district. Because if a person like me who's coming here decides where to live, if the school district is a opportunity, is a decision, a part of the decision, if you reduce the quality of education in Montgomery County, you're going to make it less attractive. And my concern is then that it puts this county on a downward spiral. If less education, fewer people get attracted, property taxes go down, revenues go down, and the quality of life goes down. So, that, I know in the short-term suit, yeah, let's cut, 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 but in the long-term, that could be detrimental. So, I'm wondering what the county thinks about that as well. What can you do to prevent that from happening? Thank you.[1066.01][1066.01][applause]
Great question. Let me just say that I too, like many people in Montgomery County, moved here 26 years ago, I did, with a four-year-old and a baby on the way. And I worked in the District of Columbia and have, could have chosen to live in Prince George's County, Fairfax County, Arlington, you know, wherever in the region. And I chose Montgomery County for the same reasons that you did, and my youngest son just graduated from the University of Maryland. Thank goodness, he finally, he's finally out of the house. But anyway, let me just say that the untold story of the success of Montgomery County Public Schools has a lot to do with the elected officials who have the power of the purse strings. We are very, very happy, I think, as council members, that council members and county executives have made it happen for the school system, because we put in more than $600 million over the state mandated maintenance of effort over the past decade. And that is the story that is not told, that the success of our stellar school system wasn't done by itself. There were a lot of players in that. And we continue to believe wholeheartedly in supporting our school system, because we understand, like you do, what happens if it goes the other way. We do not believe any of the decisions that are on the table that we're going to be making are going to send the school system into a downward spiral. We don't believe that would happen, and if we thought that, we wouldn't be making certain decisions. Now, there is a middle tier of decision-makers before us, and that is your elected Board of Education. And so, we are in constant contact with the school board, with our state legislators, with the governor of Maryland, and we all believe that Montgomery County school system is what makes the state of Maryland the top school system in the nation. So, I just want you to know from this council member, someone who's spent my entire adult life in advocating for public education, that we're not going backwards. And I will turn the microphone over to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you. Also, you know, a former school board member, president from 2006 to 2008, I can tell you that, as you probably well know, all the studies show that school systems like Montgomery County, which happened to be an urban school system within a suburban, I mean, I'm not sure if a lot of people understand that we have an area of the county that has over 60,000 students with high rates of poverty, mobility, as well as ESOL students. And that's about the size of the DC public schools. So, this is an extraordinary county in terms of its school system, and it's because of two reasons. The investment that we have made, but also the consistency within which the strategic plan has been executed. And that's important to recognize. So, as somebody who had to sit and really go through a lot of the thought processes behind the success of Montgomery County Public Schools, I am confident that if we do go through this road of having to figure out some equities in terms of savings, that because we have been so consistent for so many years, we are not going to turn the clock back. And that is really important, because you alluded to the fact that a wonderful school system attracts many, many things, such as economic development, such as people from all walks of life, diverse economic status, et cetera. That's what makes our county so incredible. So, I think that we have to be assured that if the Board of Education makes decisions that are not going to, in any way, turn the clock back, and I think we can do that, we will be fine. Now, can we do this year after year? Yes, I would be concerned, because if you do begin to turn the clock back in terms of investment year after year, then you might see some of that, you know, backward sort of slippage. But I believe that we can do this very well, and I don't think that our school systems, the quality of the education, the academic achievement should suffer.
I need to make a really quick announcement. I failed to do so earlier, but we are joined by Delegate Tom Hucker from District 20, my district. Welcome, Tom.[1334.33][1334.33][applause]
Just really quickly, I don't, I don't think the teachers are overpaid, but I don't believe that there's not money to be saved in the school system. And the thing that the council's labored with is frankly, the state law on maintenance of effort, which makes it illegal for the school system to save money. If they make a cut, if they found a way to save money, they're obligated to find another way to spend the money that they saved. That's just nuts. I don't believe there's a right percentage or a wrong percentage of the school budget. I think that, you know, the right amount of money is the amount of money that gets the kids educated. And this council and previous councils have been committed to trying to make sure that those resources are available. And the school board has the ability to tell the superintendent, if you're going to make cuts, we want to see a package of cuts that don't impact the classroom. They have the ability to reject cuts that impact the classroom. So, there are other people who've got the ability to make sure that the school system and our children are protected, and that if cuts are made, they're done in a way that don't impact on the educational quality. I think your basic arguments are right.
One other, one other quick point, that is, the county council has to look at the big picture and the, all the different important services that are provided by the county, including public safety, including vital health and human services, including libraries, which took a 23% cut in this year's budget. So, we have to balance the whole, and we have to make sure that we're not starving some of our agencies to the point where they're not able to carry out their essential mission. And the school system took a fairly modest cut of 1% in this year's budget from last year, and in comparison to other agencies, it did very well.
Good evening. My name is Doris Stell, and I've owned a home here in West Tyrandale for 32 years. And I don't have a question for you as much as I have a request. And my request is that you be aware of a cell phone tower, a T-Mobile cell phone tower that is now on track to be constructed across the street at the West Tyrandale Swim Club. This is to be 200, excuse me, it's to be 120 feet tall. This plan was okayed four weeks ago today by the Montgomery County Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals voted to accept this request by T-Mobile in spite of the fact that two hearing examiners, two had, Francois Carrier and a Mr. Tierney, both had written long reports recommending that the tower not be permitted. The Board of Appeals disregarded those reports that represented hundreds of hours of citizen time, hundreds of hours of staff time, and therefore thousands of dollars for Montgomery County in staff time. And the Board of Appeals, in my view, rather cavalierly rejected those recommendations and voted to permit the tower to be erected. The tower will be very, we've talked a lot about education tonight. We're talking about putting a tower on poor property adjacent to the brand-new Crest Haven Elementary School. We're talking about putting it, we're talking about raising a requirement that it be, I guess, if it's going to be 120 feet tall, it would be, okay, raising the requirement for a setback. We're talking about raising the requirement, well, being loose with the requirement that it be 300 feet from the nearest home. We're talking about going against FDA, Food and Drug Administration desire to not have a cell phone tower so close. And, please be aware of it. If anybody would like, I'd be happy to give any of you a tour of the neighborhood and the school, any of you, any of your staffers, but please be aware of that.
Okay. Anyone like to address that up there? What committee would that fall under?
I will just say that I was aware of the cell phone tower situation, because I represent this district. I was just whispering to Councilmember Elrich, do we have, can, is there anything we can do about a decision made by the Board of Appeals, and it doesn't appear that there's any, there's nothing this body can do? And furthermore, the information that I do have is that the council is preempted by federal law as it relates to the cell phone tower situations, that as long as the carrier meets federal requirements, there's very little we can do. But I'd like to talk to you after this is over and get a little bit more information from you about the situation.
Okay. We are just about out of time. I know there are a lot of folks out there who still have their hands up, and I've, I can assure you, the council members will be staying for a little bit longer to answer those questions. I want to thank the folks from the Office of Legislative Oversight for coming out and presenting their report to the residents. It was very informational, helpful. They're still here too, to answer your questions. And I am going to turn it over to Council President Valerie Irvin for some closing remarks.
Well, I want to thank you all so very much for being here tonight. These were some unbelievably great questions and comments, which will give us a lot to chew over in the next days and weeks and months to come. And so, what makes Montgomery County so special and so unique in the country is citizen participation. And we couldn't do what we do without you. So, we want to thank you very much. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for serving with me. It's a pleasure to get up every morning and go to work. As much, as tough as it can be, we really do appreciate serving the citizens of Montgomery County. So, thank you all very much.[1763.53][1763.53][applause]